Call the meeting to order. Approval of the October tenth minutes.
I'll please approve the October tenth minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? Keith?
Hi.
Reese?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, November fourteenth minutes. I have a question, there were a couple bills that weren't on there, Joan, remember I sent you that?
Yep, I included them.
The pay four and five and the Lindell bill and the RDO bill?
It's on the adjusted.
Really? I didn't see them. You know, there was an RDO bill for sixty dollars, but the other one was like seventy, nine hundred dollars or whatever it was.
Thirteen.
Was it thirteen? Okay, there's that one, okay, I see that one, okay.
And the pay, the amounts for the pay requests are on there?
Or pay three, bottom?
Should've been.
No, in the, in the text, well, four, four and five were pay, they're, no, okay. They are, the amounts are on the, within the minutes.
Oh, I see. Okay, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, okay. Then the Lindell bill, is that?
It's in checks. And that was two, four, six thousand for the work that was done on the street projects and then a hundred dollars for work done on a municipal.
Oh, okay, alright, very good, thank you.
That was done on the city's behalf.
Okay.
I move to accept the minutes for November fourteenth.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Keith?
Hi.
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Okay, approval of financials. I got one question. Didn't, like, in June or something, wasn't it, like, there were like six funds that were closed out, went to the general fund?
Correct.
So, I see, a lot of these still have a balance in them?
They have small balances in them, I've been working with Bannon. They're somewhere in the payroll software that is still coming across and hitting some of the funds over on the fund accounting side.
Yeah, I just noticed that today, so I thought.
Yep, yep, they're all small, I've been adjusting them as they come across, but they haven't, haven't found the link as to where they're connected yet, so.
Well, I guess that one is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, though, that's special assessment deficiency?
That wasn't one that was combined.
You sure?
I can double check it, but when it came through, when this came through, it was not.
I thought it was, but, okay, alright, thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
Did you have some?
No.
Okay.
I move to accept the financial statements.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
Hi.
Please?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, the commission calendar for two thousand seventeen. If I think your schedule is probably the worst.
No.
Okay, I know your schedule's the worst. You got a chance to review that, or? Well, firstly, I don't think option B is even an option, because, you know, I mean, one meeting a month in the summer for sure is probably not enough, right?
Well, it kinda depends on if we are planning on anything.
Well, I would hope not, but.
So the.
I'm good either way.
The idea of having two in the summer each month is because it's busy?
We're busy, yeah. You know, we have construction going on, so, you know, so. Are all these on Mondays, Joan, that they, you know, or?
The same second, well, yeah, the second Monday on option A on B, and on option A, let's go first and third.
Yeah, okay.
Once we get to the spring and summer.
I'm thinking if we don't have construction, though, like, I think once a month would be enough, but. But it is only four, four meetings, it's not a big deal.
Second and fourth, is what they fall on. So June is twelve and twenty-sixth, that's the second and the fourth Monday. And May, eight twenty-two, second and fourth, they're all the same second.
Oh, excuse me. February, March pulls on to thirteenth. We'll go Tuesday from them instead. Fourteenth. It'll be the same for them two months.
February and March?
Yep.
I'll be fine with me, everybody?
And April tenth. We do that on the eleventh, that'd be a Tuesday. May eighth, we do that one on a Tuesday also, that'd be the ninth. And the only other one was August twenty-eighth. That would be the second meeting, I guess, of that month, if we couldn't change that one, I guess. You know, it would be, you know.
Through the twenty-ninth?
Through the twenty-ninth, yeah, if we could.
Does everybody think on all those?
Two, Tuesday's work as well.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, either way.
So if we did go with option A, which included the second meeting in the summer months, we could always decide not to have that second one if we felt we didn't need it? Or if we agree to this, are we having them? Okay.
Pretty much, yeah.
If you go with option B, you can always call an additional meeting if you wouldn't need it.
That, that can be done.
It does get, one of the reasons why, like, from the office point of view, why do we need to towards the two meetings a month is a lot of it's planned in a zone, because we have such a shortened building time. In, in North Dakota, people, if there's a variance, if there's something in question that the city commission has to decide, then instead of waiting a month for that next meeting, that kind of puts people off, we can get some of that stuff taken care of for them. But there's not always something on there, but we have found that there have been quite a few instances where being able to move out along for people, it keeps their building process going and flowing and things.
Make a motion for option A with kits, slight modifications.
Any further discussion on that? Keith?
Hi.
Reese?
Hi.
Bye.
No.
Bye.
Okay, very good. Band and vehicles and excess junk. Well, Keith and I are gonna get together, we have talked, and we're trying to pick out a date to get together, and it snowed, so. You know, we'll get to it when we can, I guess, so. Dick Baker, exclusion of land ordinance. Everybody should have that, I think. Anybody got thoughts on that? I, I don't have a problem with it myself. I think it's Walton who's right to do that, so.
My concern is that there's been development, there's water in sewer up by the interpretive center, also water below as well. And the water runs along, I believe, the property line, city water. Still a little concerned with that.
When you say water below, you mean, like?
Water going to River Egg, city water.
That's what I thought you were gonna say.
Yeah. You know.
Yeah.
And I believe when the, when the interpretive center ended up buying that land, it was brought into the city during that period of time? No, it was not. It was brought into the city after the interpretive center was built, so the fact that development occurred because of the ordinance is really false. The ordinance was written to take advantage of any sales tax that might be generated by the interpretive center, so. And when you talk about utilities, I mean, the utilities are on the north side of my family's property. There, there is no access to our property. Once they did the, the trail around our property, we lost all access to it, other than section line roads on the northwest corner. And, and one thing that kinda bothers me a little bit is that when this ordinance was, was written, I was told by the city attorney that there would be no impact on my taxes. Well, just talk to Joan and you'll find out there's been a huge impact on our taxes. So, and nothing's happened, so, I mean, what's, what's the point, I guess?
I don't know how, how an attorney could ever say that.
Well, he did.
Yeah.
I have no witnesses, but he said it, and, and it, we agreed to it.
And I'm sure at the time, that's what the, what they thought, you know?
Sure, and, and I, and we are certainly in favor of development, we have no problem with that, but there's, there has been no indication. The interpretive center aside, because that happened before the fact, there, there's been no interest in any development there at all. It's unplatted, there's no utilities, except for what you say, and that's, seems kinda senseless in my, really.
I had just done a little looking, it was interpretive center, Don Charging residence, which isn't a longer Don Charging residence. And Mr. Baker's properties were all annexed into the city in two thousand, in October of two thousand.
And the way the ordinance states is, is that if, I can't remember what the percentage was, but if, if my family decided to oppose the annexation, I mean, we would have had the majority as far as opposing that is concerned, so it's. And if you talk to the other people who were involved at the time, I think they would say the same thing. There might be a few horses that might benefit from that in the past, but other than that, I think that's the extent of it.
Yeah, this is a step on the.
It's on the west side of two hundred, right, bounded on the north by the interpretive center, the east, two hundred, and on the south by the railroad tracks.
Yeah, there's a big houli in there.
Yeah. And largely, not real developable, I mean, there's, could be some sites there for homes, but, you know, for a development per se, it's not.
How does this look, I don't know, how does this look for Washburn? Well, I guess if we haven't done anything with it thus far, going away from it would prevent us from that in the future, obviously. Seems like it's prime real estate running along two hundred there in eighty-three. It's been sixteen years, and when, when does the, is it ten years after ten years you can file for de-annexation?
Well, you know, last year, we had just done for Patty Schultz.
That's on the north.
That was north of eighty-three. You know, really, there's no good access to get on there.
Well, access can be built, though, you know?
Yeah, but, you know, basically, it's that big hill and.
But when you talk about prime development, the prime development is to the north, and you just negated that by de-anexing Patty Schultz's property. I mean, that's more developable than ours is, to be perfectly honest with you.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this?
I would, I would support Keith's comment that it's in between, you know, the Lewis and Clark, and then the business is down below, it seems. Seems like we shouldn't do this.
I think you've already set the precedence, though, with the Schultz land. I mean, that's certainly something to consider. I mean, even the city attorney says that he was surprised that nothing was said about the property that my family owns.
Yeah, well, I, I just don't see anything happening here in a long time, you know?
You know, if there is some interest in development, I guess our family would be more than interested in, in looking at that, but, you know, in the past sixteen years, we moved here in ninety-three, nothing has ever been, we've never been approached for any kind of development there, never, for anything.
Although, the Lewis and Clark is in there.
Okay, let's go back to two thousand then, but beyond that, there, that's nothing. And that wasn't with us, that was with my father, and he graciously decided to sell it to him at a reasonable price.
So this is already zoned agriculture, then? Or always?
I would say it's agricultural, yeah.
For, we have, on the county level as well as for city zoning, it's.
I mean, you're definitely within your legal rights to ask for this, so. You gonna make the motion that we go ahead with the de-annexation of the Baker property?
Actually, it would be a first reading of an ordinance.
Okay.
So it'd be a first reading of an ordinance, and then we would read it again in January, and you would take a vote on it at that time.
So we don't actually move on anything now, we just read it, and then we take the vote at the end?
Well, you take the vote in January, after the second reading.
Okay.
Right.
Do we vote on whether we read it? Read it?
I believe so. Yes. Because when, I can go grab the central code if you would like, but when I was reading it before, it was my understanding that for an ordinance, it is up to the commission as a whole as to whether or not they wanna even entertain the idea of de-annexing a property. If they, if you as a commission decide not to even entertain the idea, then the ordinance is, there's no reason for it to be read. But it's the same thing, if you choose to read it, and then there's the first reading, and then we did the second reading, and they make an official vote on it at that time.
Okay, well, then I will change my motion to say I, motion that we go ahead and do the first reading of the proposed annexation. Would that be correct? Okay. Here's the motion, we have a second on that. Calling for a second. I'm still going to discussion after this, if you want, but.
One second.
Okay. Okay. We have a second, so, any further discussion on this? Anybody need more time to look this over before we vote on this?
Well, if there was something that come, or he wanted to start developing this, so, he'd have to go to planning the zone and get that all changed over to a residential type deal, right?
Yes, unless, you know, one person bought the whole thing and used it for one house, I guess, but, yeah, if they wanted to do a planned development, yeah.
Could, could they do a development after we de-annex and then still do a development, but not be a part of the city?
Well, I, I think they could, but then, you know, they might have a hard time getting city utilities.
State could be through the county, but yes, then they'd have to come back to the city to get.
Come back to the city to get utilities, so.
The water, there's water in sewer on that side, but only the interpretive centers have took both water and sewer. The industrial park area down below, they have sewer capability, but they are all on the city water, so it's on that side, they're just kind of, big concern in the middle of it.
And then is it the water that runs right along the walking path?
No, nothing runs along the walking path. The water comes over from Senex. The sewer is on the other side, on the east side of the highway runs up, the ditch on the east side of the highway. There's nothing that runs along the walking path.
Brian, didn't you, I thought you had told me today that the water crosses up by the bridge over to River Egg and industrial.
Underneath, yeah, the water, there's, there's two spots. You guys are on this side of the washroom. River Egg hits it down here, underneath the bridge, Senex brings it over there, there's, there's a, what, three quarters of a mile in between there.
Yeah, on the other side of the railroad track.
I understand that there's distance in between there, I was just asking if the line.
Yeah, but there's no way that it's coming up from River Egg up to, you know.
No, I know that, no, I was just asking where it crossed over to River Egg.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, go for it. Keith?
No.
Please?
No.
Keith?
Hi.
No.
Hi.
I go, yes.
So that means there will be a second reading, is that correct?
Yeah, we have to do the first reading now, and then.
Okay.
And it's an ordinance excluding property from the corporate city limits from the city of Washburn, North Dakota, be ordained by the city commission as a city of Washburn, McLean County, North Dakota, as follows. Section one, territory excluded. The territory and land herein after described is hereby declared to be excluded from the corporate city limits from the city of Washburn, North Dakota, as follows. Township one forty-four north, range eighty-two west, section fourteen. West half northwest quarter, north of the Sioux line, railroad right of way, less, attractive landline in the north half northwest quarter, west of highway two hundred A. Of section fourteen, township one forty-four north, range eighty-two west, fifth PM. Said track being described as follows. Beginning at a point a distance of sixty feet south of the northwest corner of said north half northwest corner, thence running east sixty feet south of in parallel with the north line of said north half northwest quarter, a distance of one thousand three hundred and twenty point forty-four feet. Then south sixty-nine degrees fifty-eight forty-four east, a distance of six fifty-two forty-four feet. Thence from a tangent bearing of south twelve degrees thirty-five six, thirty-five feet sixteen point four inches west along a zero degrees eighteen foot curve to the left, and a distance of one fifty-seven twenty-three feet. Thence a west four thirty-three four, four hundred and thirty-three fifty-five feet south of in parallel with the north line of the said north half northwest quarter, a distance of one thousand nine hundred and six five feet. Thence north along the west line of said north half northwest quarter to the point of the beginning. Said track is shown on the plat as parcel number one dash one, and contains fourteen point seven two acres, accepting all that portion line within thirty-three feet of the section line. Section two, provisions applicable. The territory to be excluded is a result of a petition by one hundred percent of the owners of the territory to be excluded. The territory has been within the limits of the city of Washburn, North Dakota, for more than ten years. The property has never been platted, and there are no municipal improvements thereon. From and after, from and after of the final passage and adaption, adoption of this ordinance, the territory herein before described shall be excluded from the corporate limits of the city of Washburn, North Dakota. And that would be our first reading dated today, December twelfth, two thousand sixteen.
I've gotta step out for a second, 'cause I guess someone almost hit my car, I'm supposed to move it, so, I'll be right back.
Okay, well, take a break.
You look at me like I was one of those.
So does that conclude the first reading, then, is that?
And so then the next one is in the stand.
The reading?
Yeah.
Larry, say, when was the, remember when you split that snow fence up on Fourteenth Street for us? That was many years ago, we haven't needed one. And a little bit of years, this one we could've used with, 'cause that Fourteenth Street gets clogged really easy.
Yeah.
And now, right now, they piled up snow, which is gonna help, but we could've.
Somebody have a white car out here?
A what?
Well, I think you might be next in line.
Where, where are you guys moving your cars from?
I just pulled mine up.
Oh.
Right along that snow bank over there.
We're okay, right?
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm just, the years we could've used the snow fence.
Right, and then Ryan and I went and hooked on it. Yeah, we would've snow fence.
Many years, I know. Ready, Keith?
Yep.
Okay, uh, new lawn, special event, ordinance permit, still working on that. Uh, Joan, I have some stuff to look over too with that, so, going through all that.
Did you, I had one person that was asked about forming a committee to help develop that ordinance, is that something that the commission would be interested in at a point in time?
Um, possibly, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
But he didn't talk about it.
I think we got a little bit of time, um, so.
Yeah, a few months.
You got a person that was interested in being on the committee here?
That happens.
I have a special ordinance, now, do we need to make a motion to table this, or haven't we really brought it up?
Well, we've never actually brought it up to a vote, so, I would say no. You know, it's just something being worked on. Uh, Washburn School request for yearbook sponsorship. Asking for, I guess they didn't give an amount, right, last year we gave a hundred dollars.
In the past couple years, we have always, I think they have the sizes, oh, they don't this year.
Yeah, they have the sizes here.
Well, they've shown them.
Oh, I see.
They had a visual, but yes, we've been, for the past couple years, we've been doing a hundred dollar add in them.
I think I voted no last year, the main reason I did is because, you know, the businesses and those type of things, you know, can, can sponsor that, but I'm just kinda wondering if we should use taxpayer dollars to sponsor. Not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying that's why I usually vote no.
I, I hear what you're saying, you know, I do. Okay, I will entertain them. Somebody wants to make a motion to either do a sponsorship or not? Anybody wants to make a motion? Well, if nobody wants to do anything, we'll just move on. Anybody, any thoughts?
What are you voting on? Are you voting on whether or not you guys wanna donate money towards the yearbook?
Yeah.
And why would you not want to be that?
Because we're spending taxpayer dollars.
Okay, we'll move on.
What if the taxpayers don't care?
Then they can donate all they want.
Right. They can run for city commission now.
Support the kids.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the liquor licenses then. Okay, well, we'll move on to the liquor licenses then. Uh, first one is, we've got to do these individually, right, Phil? Okay, first one is Captain's Cabin. I have a motion to approve the liquor license for Captain's Cabin. Any discussion on that?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is Superpumper.
Make a motion to approve Superpumper's two thousand seventeen liquor license.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second then.
Any further discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Next, eighty-three Express. I should say Bickert Enterprises. I'll make a motion to accept the Bickert Enterprises eighty-three Express liquor license.
One second.
Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Okay, Interbase?
Motion to approve Interbase's liquor license for two thousand seventeen.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second then.
Any discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Uh, Reese?
Aye.
Uh, Kit?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Riverboat Saloon.
Make a motion to approve the Riverboat Saloon liquor license for two thousand seventeen.
One second.
Okay, any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Uh, Kit?
Aye.
Aye.
American Legion?
Make a motion to approve American Legion two thousand seventeen liquor license.
One second.
Any discussion? Um, Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
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 And we have Max Place. It's, it's actually Brent McAdoo Estate. Doing business as Max's place. I actually discussed this with David Lindell today and, uh, he said, yeah, he didn't see a problem with this because if anybody that buys it, they would still have to go through anything. This is just to make his business, you know, probably a little more valuable, so.
There's actually, um, we did have to call the state about it. It was a little bit more involved.
Okay.
Um, the liquor license for, because he was the sole owner of the property, his state liquor license will not, is not transferable. So he can, at the city level, we can renew his liquor license and then as Commissioner Thomas said, you know, he'll be able to sell the property with the knowledge that when someone new comes in, they can transfer the license over to the new person. Otherwise, it costs twenty-five thousand dollars for a city alcohol license. Um, but, um, within the city here, we do, within our ordinance, it does talk about if the death of a licensee upon application, they can, they can carry on. So I guess I would suggest re-motion to approve it. It's with the understanding that there is no state, however you want to word it, there is no state license that, you know, follows through. So whoever comes in, you know, has to go through all that.
Okay.
It's just to help with Max's estate.
Okay, we'll make a motion to approve the Max Place liquor license, uh, which is only for the city license.
One second.
Any further discussion on that?
Keith? Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Uh, Keith, yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resignation of Clark Price, Planning and Zoning Committee. He, um, is resigning of, of, uh, Planning and Zoning. It's too bad because he's got a lot of knowledge on there. He's been on there a long time. So, um, I guess, uh, I will, will we accept the resignation of Clark from the Planning and Zoning?
One second.
Yeah, it's motion. Any discussion on that? Okay, uh, Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I know Collins Eiverson would be interested in a spot on there. I don't know what, if we want to ask for volunteers that might be interested, or I think it might be good to be-
Maybe probably do that.
Yeah. Just put that in the paper or what do you think?
No, we can put an ad in the paper and we can put it on the city website and stuff. I think it's always nice to have it opened up and to see who's interested in-
So then hopefully we can decide by next meeting.
Okay.
Um, that'll be our time to decide then, okay?
Yep.
All right, very good. Employee appreciation gifts.
What did we do last year?
It was a hundred and fifty Washburn bucks.
Washburn bucks.
I move that we do employee appreciation gifts at a hundred and fifty dollar Washburn bucks.
One second.
Can I ask, or go ahead? I was just going to say, is that just for full-time employees?
It's, it's actually, well, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to do the janitor also.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, it'd be this building and the janitor.
Okay.
That's generally what it's been. Any other discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Right here. Um, two thousand seventeen wages. Keith and Noel, I believe that's something you were thinking about.
Okay, um, you know, we thought we'd open it up to discussion, you know, and see what everybody thought. You know, I guess what our thought was is, you know, I can't, you have to tell me if I'm correct or not, Noel, but we were saying that, uh, you know, we would kind of want your guys' input and what everyone thought would be fair. You know, you know, we were saying, you know, at least fifty cents in our raise. I think that's what we were doing.
I think it's a twenty-five.
Okay, but anyway, so if we can just discuss this among everybody and come up with a compromise of what everybody thinks would happen.
I'm not really sure of Washburn City, but you know, it seems like state, county, everybody is, you know, wondering where they're going to get their money from. You know, it seems like Washburn seems to be in pretty good shape. But still, you know, I think we need to be careful about, um, you know, where we spend money. I mean, Washburn, I mean, I think our people get paid extremely well the way it is. I mean, the benefits are second to none. You know, there is an increase in, um, health insurance wages that we have picked up, or health insurance costs that we have picked up. So, I mean, I would say, you know, twenty-five fifty cents would be fine with me across the board. One thing I hate is percentage raises.
No, yeah, I don't like that either. Well, I move that we go with a fifty cent per hour raise for all employees.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kit?
Go ahead.
Well?
Aye.
Uh, Joan, office closed, twenty-third, twenty-sixth. Explain that real quick.
Uh, yes, according to the employee handbook, the holiday falls on a non-scheduled birthday, as it does this week, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth are paid holidays and they're on Saturdays and Sundays. So then that would put the day before the twenty-third and the day after the twenty-sixth.
And that is in the employee policy handbook.
Correct.
Okay.
So we don't need to move on that at all? It's just part of the-
No, it's part of the policy. Workforce Safety Grant, motorized tugger hitch and coupler for storage carts.
When we were discussing with Workforce Safety, when they came and evaluated the new tarp cart over at the Memorial Building, um, she was weighing it and she suggested for the city because it is, it's so heavy for a motorized tugger. Um, and it moves it easily as a tugger. Um, and that was approved through the Workforce Safety Grant.
How big is this thing, this tugger?
I'm going to defer to Sharon. She's been doing quite a bit of research on said tugger.
Isn't that overly huge? Um, you just walk, you just press a button and you just kind of maneuver it where you need to.
It's like a, what, four-wheel thing?
Yep.
And so it's got a handle, you can steer it.
It has a handle, you can steer it, yes. Mm-hmm. Has a battery in it.
And the reason I ask is, you know, I know we're kind of limited on storage over there.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I ask, you know, I mean, I'm assuming that this cart with the covers on it, that just sits in it by the wall, right?
Yep, and it could be used for other items because you have a hitch on it and then you have a pin on it and you can pin it to other things. Once you put the hitch on the storage cart, it would obviously stay there. But if you had a hitch on something else, you could use it on other areas if needed to.
Well, we definitely want safety of our employees, probably, you know, to be first rate.
So just for information, the cost of this item is six thousand seven hundred dollars, but with the seventy-five percent WSI grant, it knocks it down to just over sixteen hundred dollars.
That's with, with everything.
With all three, yes.
Right, with-
Power winder and-
Hitch, coupler, uh, and tugger, so, um, the grant is helping out tremendously.
I have a question here. What's the leaf blower?
The leaf blower, it was a, a leaf blower. Um, they use it for snowing though, to blow off the sidewalks.
No, it wasn't really mentioned either. Okay. I've never noticed that until just now, so.
It's a backpack.
Oh, is it gavel or something?
Yes.
Oh.
Don't need one that big.
That's what they requested.
I mean, we have a sweeper that goes on-
You say leaf blower?
Yeah. That's, that's a workforce safety thing.
We've got a handheld one, gas powered, which is fine.
For the grant.
Yeah.
But for that price.
Yeah.
You know, and that's also-
It's actually a hundred dollars off of that. Um, when I talked to Ace Hardware, I was able to get it the government rate and so they took a hundred dollars off of that.
So the cost is twenty-four dollars?
Whatever, it was three ninety-nine, I think it was.
Well, here it says leaf blower four ninety-nine.
Yes, but since then, since I created that there, they took a hundred dollars off.
So it's three ninety-nine, so does WSI pay three hundred and seventy-four and we pay twenty-four then?
So it'll be like ninety dollars.
We pay twenty-four.
So I guess I should clarify, there's items on the list, power winder for the storage cart, a leaf blower, motorized tugger, hitch, and then a coupler. Everything adds up to now sixty-six hundred minus seventy-five percent, so it'll be about fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, then it says we got shipping of thirty-two dollars. So we're looking at probably closer to sixteen hundred.
Close to two thousand.
Oh, I missed that. Oh, yeah, so yeah, we're getting that. So we'll be close to two thousand. How long is this price going to last?
Thirty days.
Does that mean we got a one cent sales tax worth? Or not? Or do we just?
I think we're just fine.
I'll motion that we approve the list. For the storage cart, leaf blower, the tugger and the kitchen coupler.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'm just wondering if that leaf blower is going to use that much, but-
Okay, actually, um, we're, uh, we have a part that we have to get for it, but actually Mark has been asking for it a lot. He's very anxious because he comes very early in the morning. And so Kim can go down the sidewalks with the sweeper, but for the areas that Mark does, the length of the Memorial Building and then up here, he's very anxious to be able to use that so he can just go out and blow off the snow when it's at a soft, you know, a fluffy type snow, so.
Right.
I actually think he'll use it quite a bit.
I actually bought a leaf blower for my snow tube. I mean, I really, the snow that we got hasn't done much good. It's been kind of hard, but, okay, any other discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Aye.
Fine. Sorry. Uh, Library Update?
Yeah, just wanted to note that we have, um, two new board members for appointment, so I'll make a motion to appoint those individuals. The library board as it stands right now, Mark Baish, Donna Gunderson, Reece Bane, Sandy Wagner, Ethel Mart, with the appointment by the commission of Sandy Wagner and, um, Ethel Mart. So I'll make a motion to appoint Sandy Wagner and Ethel Mart to the library board.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, um, so two other people that were on there, they, their term was up, is that what the deal is, or?
Yeah.
Okay, and they wanted to get off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Aye.
Sales News Tab got tax application from Weetabix. Basically that went before planning and zoning.
Self use.
I'm, one cent sales tax, I'm sorry. Um, but they wanted, is everybody familiar with this at all? Maybe you want to-
It's on page eighty.
Is it on here? Okay.
Uh, we had an application from the, from the Economic Development Association. It's for a large Daktron sign that'll be placed out on the school property, be right out on the corner, kind of in line with Family Dollar. Um, it's to be a community sign. The, it's on the school property and they will maintain it and pay the utilities and they associate a cost with it and then, um, they will be looking for additional sponsorships. So one of those large electronic signs. They'll have capability to update it and run it through the school and then also through the Economic Development Association with TAN. Did you have anything else you want, do you want to add more to it? The sign is, I mean, everyone kind of thinks of Wilton Sign when we talk about a sign like this. It's, this sign is going to be thirty foot tall. Um, the Daktronic part of the sign, the board is actually thirteen point nine inches long, so by four foot eight. So, I mean, we have, it's a large screen, it's going to be up in the air, you'll be able to see it from Highway eighty-three. Um, the school will control all school programming, all, control all, um, city business programming and it's just, it's a great community, um, partnership between the school, the city and, um-
Yeah, so basically what it is, is, um, you know, the school committed ten thousand dollars. The requested sales tax was fifty thousand dollars. Um, they're going to sell four sponsorships for ten thousand dollars apiece. The sales and use tax approved it coming out of the, uh, infrastructure, um, portion of the, uh, fund, with the condition that the four sponsors are obtained before, you know, going ahead with the project, so. So basically, uh, they recommended a, sales and use recommended, um, yes, for this. So I will make a motion that, uh, that the city approves the request for fifty thousand dollars.
I think on page eighty-four or two, there's a picture of where it would be located.
Kind of in between the walking trail and Bus Barn Road right along- Kind of in between the walking trail and Bus Barn Road, right along Border Lane there, it'd be kind of at a, at an angle kinda with the road, correct, and, uh, so that you can see it coming down the highway, plus when you come on Border Lane or Seventh Street or K Street, you'll be able to see it in all directions, so.
And it's two-sided?
Two-sided, correct.
And we have secured two of the four sponsors, with third looking very, very positive, so, we have one more sponsorship to go after then.
It's just a little bit different, the sign shows just Washburn, it's actually gonna say welcome to Washburn rather than just Washburn.
Do you have, did you have a second?
Cool, I'll second.
So then, the, the note on this bid, it shows that fifty thousand of the sixty will be, um, from the sales and use tax, and ten thousand from the school would be the required down payment, but that won't be submitted until the four donors are secured.
I don't believe that was our final discussion on the approval of it, is that what was in the notes?
I believe so.
I have it in my notes from the meeting, not like, I've got a whole bunch, but that was, that's in my notes if that matters at all, so unless I missed something after that discussion, that was the last I had. I don't believe that was in the final approval of it, that that was the commission, but regardless, we will secure the, the sponsorships.
Well, I guess at the meeting on there, you know, it was stated that, you know, if you can't get the four sponsors, you're not gonna go through with this.
We won't go through with that.
Right, okay, so basically what we're just doing is committing, you know, um, the check won't be written until, you know, everything is in order, so.
I guess my question is nothing against this, but when we went asking for money from sales and use tax to help ride down the street project, they didn't give us what we asked for, but they got money to throw at something like this, which the streets is way more expensive than this is, so why, why do we not get that, but they got fifty thousand here to, to throw out a sign, and like I said, nothing against it, I don't wanna be, don't take it the wrong way, I mean, it, it's, it looks like a good deal, I guess, but I guess it's hard for me to swallow when we asked for money and they denied us, you know, all that we were asking.
Well, I, I, I think when it came to money for that speed project, I mean, it was, you know, they decided to go with, what, a quarter, twenty-five percent of the-
The, I, I believe the request of the sales and use tax fund was to take all, all of the, the money that was coming into the street portion of the sales and use fund for the next two consecutive years, and they didn't feel that taking all of the money out of that particular fund for two years, right at that moment, was, was in the best juncture, they didn't wanna drain the fund before it had the money in it, because it didn't have that amount of money in it, so they dedicated half of the one percent, um, for, for two years, and it'll, to build it up, and then they'll have it reevaluated and then get the rest of the money to the streets.
Well, we also said that we're gonna reevaluate that in January of seventeen, which is next month, so.
And I will say this, we, I think we asked for nineteen percent, and I could be wrong, but I think we ended up getting fifteen percent, and then plus the project came much lower as well, um, so it was somewhat of a rush.
And this particular item is out of a different portion of the sales and use tax money, it's community infrastructure, or community economic development, infrastructure.
Streets is infrastructure too.
Well, the, the streets definitely falls under this also, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes, absolutely.
But I think what it was all said and done, in all the projects we've done so far that we've been on the commission, we've tried to get close to that nineteen percent as far as bonding down the projects, and we ended up with fifteen percent on the last project, but the project was much less expensive as well.
You know, the thing is too, though, um, according to the way it's written, as long as it's not illegal, we have a pass, right, right, Joan?
Correct, except for Alany.
But, but I, 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 I agree with you, um, Keith, on what you're saying, you definitely wanna, definitely want it for streets too, so.
Sorry.
Ray?
I'm, I'm a little confused, and it's, maybe I'm not listening, but this sign is gonna be used for school purposes, or city purposes, or both?
Both.
All of the above.
All of the above?
It'll be school purposes, it'll be special events, it'll be-
Businesses.
So they want, they want the city to kick in how much?
Fifty.
Sales and use money.
Sales and use tax.
Fifty?
Fifty thousand. It's a hundred thousand dollars on it.
So half of it.
So why doesn't the school, uh, take it out of their building fund, they have a humongous amount of money in their building fund, and this could be part of that and not have to rely on the city?
Well, that's a question for the school, I guess, or whoever, but-
Well, I mean-
I can't answer that question.
No, but my point is, why, why do they have to come to the city if, you know?
Well, this is what, this is what ended up happening, is, is actually Waeta and was thinking about doing a sign, and then Waeta actually found out that the school was also thinking about doing a sign, but they were gonna just put it on the side of their school, you know, and it would've been a much cheaper sign, and it would've been like the one in Wilton, but just on the side of the school, so then it came about, how about if they worked together, and then possibly get a bigger sign, and then, like, for example, we, the, uh, Waeta was already thinking about doing a business sign out there, and it would have advertisement for businesses and that, and then they decided to kinda co-op together and work on it together, so that's kinda, I'm not exactly sure why it wasn't a fifty-fifty deal, but that's, that was the communication, just so you know.
Also, I'll add that, you know, once the sign is out, the school is responsible for all the maintenance, all the, uh, electricity, if it, if it, um, dies, they're responsible for fixing it.
Well, the school was responsible-
Actually putting it in, the cost of putting it in.
The school were responsible for everything on that community calendar at one time too, till they threw it back in our lap, because, uh, it was too much of a chore, so, don't be too surprised that we aren't gonna be the ones that are running, running the city sign out there, and they're gonna tell us what to put on it as far as school events go.
But like we said, it's, it's gonna say welcome to Washburn, and then at the bottom it'll say home of the Cardinals, and then like, it'll have some school announcements, but it'll also have some business advertisement or announcements as well, you know, so that's where the economic development comes in.
Well, uh, just sitting here listening, we're concerned about the cost of living and, uh, how much to pay our city employees, and the state's cutting back, and everybody's cutting back, and then we're jumping on the bank, winning for fifty thousand bucks?
We can't say no.
What?
We can't say no, you know that, you were on the city commission.
Well, this is sales and use tax dollars.
Oh, I understand that.
We have to say, we have to approve it.
I understand, well, you don't have to approve it, but you can't stop it.
Right.
Cause as long as it's not against the law, they can do whatever they wanna with that money.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Keith?
Hi.
Reese?
Hi.
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 Hey, Ray, you're up.
Oh, well, two things. If the snow gate is not put down, when it goes past a driveway, it will not work, simple as that, and I'm concerned that certain driveways it works, many others it doesn't work, and I want the city to take care of it, either we use the snow gate at all times, you use it, if it's a double driveway, then use it, don't plug one half on each side, so you can just barely walk out, cause if the snow gate's put down, you may end up with a one foot or whatever windrow, but if you don't put it down, it's three or four feet and quite wide, so all I'm asking is, put the snow gate down, it will work, it may not be the greatest thing in the world, and it may have some, you know, you get a little snow or a little more, but if you don't put it down, it will not work.
I, but I do have some information on that, that I talked to Adam, and actually, you know, I was out there, you see me all the time, I'm always snow blowing out front, so they, you know, it's not on mine either, um, but the snow gate, the first time when we had all that slush and everything, couldn't use it, you know, couldn't use it by mine, couldn't use it by yours, and then it broke, it actually broke, now just wait, and it broke, and so they've been getting it fixed.
Well, I'm aware of all that.
Okay.
But the first blizzard we had and all that snow, it wasn't broke, cause I watched it come by my house at four forty-two Monday morning, standing in the picture window, and it was not put down, and it was used across the street, and it was used up the street, so my, I'm upset about it.
Well, and it, and that's possibly true, if that's true, then it's probably wrong, but I'm just saying, what I, what I saw, I tried to snow blow, and that snow was so wet, I couldn't even snow blow it.
I, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing that, I'm not arguing that point.
But when you have it that slushy, I'm not a snow gate expert, but I'm just telling you that when it's that slushy and that wet, that snow gate's not gonna work.
The last time the snow gate was used was this weekend when they come by with the Unimug, at my place, it's been plugged, and the snow gate has been up when it goes by, and I'm upset about it.
Ray?
Yeah.
Ray, um, when you get this much snow, the snow gate does not work.
I'm not arguing that point.
There's too much snow.
Larry, I argued that point.
You argued this point, you never hear it, but it's the same.
Listen, I'll tell you a little story, you were sitting right o, I'm not upset, I'm sick and tired of hearing that same excuse.
But it's the truth.
You were sitting over there where that lady is, Frank Mandersfield, when we bought it, cause you wanted it, he did-
I did not want it.
He looked at you and said, Larry, if we buy that snow gate, will you use it? And you said yes, so whoever replaced you should use it.
They do use it, Ray, when they can.
Sure, you got any info?
Bull feathers. I have witnesses as to what went by my place, and it's been plugged, except when the Unimug went by, now I don't know why.
It plugged up by my place too, yeah, I know.
It doesn't have to be, it can be used.
When you have that much snow-
No.
I'm talking about after the big, he went by the other day when there was this much snow and plugged it, come on.
Ray, 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 you've seen me out snow blowing like ten times.
My point is, if he doesn't put the snow gate down, it doesn't work.
I specifically called them because I was kinda questioning that same thing, and I don't wanna snow blow either, but I understand the concept though, as far as when it's that slushy, once you get past my place, and then you, you lift up the snow gate-
The first snowstorm we had was terrible, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about every day that has gone by since, I get my driveway cleaned out, and then here it comes, and it's plugged. I have one other thing, uh, as of tonight, I resigned from the airport board, so you need to appoint somebody in the near future for the airport board, I, I've spent enough time on that, I think you need a, some younger blood on there.
But, Ray, just for the other thing, I'll talk to him again about it and see what how, what's going on.
Well, I have something to say about the, the clogging of the driveways as well, and in front of the mailboxes, if the snow gate is not gonna work, is there any way that you guys can send somebody with one of your, I don't know what these things are called, with the wheels, with the big lifts on them, and, and whatever, like, like a bobcat, and clean out in front of the mailboxes, I personally can't shovel that.
You know, I know.
You know, and, and when you, when they block my driveway, when I get out of my driveway in the morning, and I come back at twelve o'clock, and I've got snow, and I realize this is an unusual year and a lot of snow, but it's every year, I got snow up to my hips, I can't shovel that snow, by the time he moves that snow over there, it's hard as a rock, it's just not right, you know, I mean, there's got to be some kinda solution to blocking the driveway.
Well, the city doesn't have the resources to do that, be, you know, um, the mailboxes are allowed, are allowed to be put there, you know, for your convenience, but with that, but, but with that, you need to take responsibility of cleaning the snow out in front of it.
I'm not the only one that has a mailbox there.
I know, what I'm saying is, that's the way it works, you know, unfortunately.
But he's pushing the snow there, it's not like the snow is coming in naturally and landing in front of those mailboxes that way, he's taking that snow and he's-
Unfortunately, that's where the snow goes, his half goes here.
Take it to the other side of the street where there's no damn mailboxes, come on, you know, I mean, it's, in the driveway.
It'd take two weeks to clean out all the streets if a guy did that, because, you know what, it takes too long.
Well, Mark, luckily Mark's been going by with his little bobcat or whatever it is, and cleaning out in front of the mailboxes.
I got ten to fifteen in my yard too, that, just lucky enough, my neighbors across the street are nice enough to take care of that, but, you know, it, I know, it sucks, it is, and this, like you said, that first snow was wet and heavy, but.
I know the last snow, we had a lot of snow, I did kinda the whole side of my block, and I went out and sat on the couch, and two seconds later, the snowplow came and buried everything.
Again.
You know, but I was mad for about ten seconds, and then I said, what else can they do, and I had to go back out there with the snow blower, and then go by and wave at me.
But you have, I see, I don't, I don't have a snow blower, you know, and I, and that's what makes it hard for me, when you stack it in front of my driveway, and I've gotta dig that out, and that's what I have to do, even though I have four-wheel drive, you know, it, what am I gonna do, beg for help from somebody?
It's not a good situation, you know, but, I mean, what are you gonna do with it, that's just it, we have so much snow, what are you gonna do with it, you know?
What is on their blade, does our blade have a snow gate on it too, doesn't it? And the Unimug?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, the, the thing is though, when, when the snow is this high along, let's say this high along the curb, and your blade is only this tall with a snow gate, it don't work, it don't work.
But it's better than no snow gate.
Well, I know what it does.
Cause you only end up with a one-foot windrow instead of a three-foot windrow, put the thing down and see what happens, it's automatic, I mean, it, it's hydraulic, and it's not like you gotta get out and turn the crank to put it down, I, I-
Okay, thank you.
No, I understand your point, I mean.
Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot the sign for the city hall.
Um, the tractor old sign is gone, um, so, okay, just a second, um, Ray, so you'll get me a letter for your resignation from the airport authority?
I'm resigning tonight, you don't need a letter, you just have to accept my resignation tonight.
Do you wanna act on that, or do you wanna come back to it?
I'll make a motion to approve Ray Hager's resignation from the airport board.
You want a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Keith?
Hi.
Reese?
Hi.
Hi.
Should we also put something in there, in that same advertisement, looking for?
Yes.
Sure.
Do we need a motion?
No.
No?
Okay. Um, so, um, at the last meeting, we discussed taking down the old sign, and then putting the lettering up on the, the brick, um, uh, so we had a bid for that, it's nineteen hundred.
Are these the same size letters as out there?
Mm-hmm, yeah, um, the only, so, yes, so if you like that, um, I had asked them possibly to move it down a little bit, and then, um, we would possibly have, um, like more like the, I'll check here, the logo, which is the, the blue river water thing up with the letters, just to make it look a little, not as sterile.
What would that cost?
Pardon me?
What would that cost?
Couple hundred more. Good, I just wanted to bring, show this to see if, if, uh, we're kind of on the right line with that, and we, it was in the budget for this year.
I don't really know if we need that river on there, but.
It looks nice here, you know?
Yeah, I like the letters.
So they are formed plastic letters, that matches what we have on the fire, that's the same.
Yes, and what they're going to do is it goes up on, I do like a grid system, otherwise they'd have to drill in four holes for each letter, so they put up some sort of grid system and then adhere it to, to that, as opposed to each letter having four holes drilled into the brick.
It says letters to be stud mounted to the building.
When he talked to me, he said it's a-
So, is he saying there's gonna be a board behind it?
I would assume it's a strip of hot metal or whatever, I would imagine, but.
No.
It says stud mounted to the building, I don't know, but whatever.
Yeah, that looks nice.
I think it looks nice.
Do we?
We need a motion.
Essentially, you're approving the bill, you know, when you let your, I don't suppose it'll go up for a while, but, um, if we have it approved now, then it will come out of this year's- If we have it for now, then it will come out of this year's budget as it was originally designed.
I'll make a motion to approve the Washburn City Hall sign from Indigo Assignments.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Aye.
Please.
Ray?
Aye.
Jasper?
I'll be quick.
Good man.
Two thousand sixteen project update, we met, Eric and I met with Keith and Larry and the city staff this afternoon to discuss some change orders that Wagner Construction submitted to us for review and consideration, so kinda what came out of that meeting is, you know, the city generally isn't supporting any of that. And they requested that we kind of go back and negotiate with Wagner, and see where things go. So, tonight, I don't have anything to present specifically on that, we'll see what, what, what comes of it by, by the January meeting, but we're looking to get that project closed out, so this is kinda the last, they completed it through November, and just looking to get the contract finalized, so Joan can get to work on the assessments, I'm sure she's looking forward to that. The intake alternatives evaluation, we did get going on that. However, I'm about a month behind on that, I really wanted Eric to work on that, so with the construction project taking a month longer, he didn't get started on that, and I could've probably pulled people in from other offices to do it, but I really, I wanted our local Bismarck staff to, and specifically Eric, to do it, so
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking by February, we'll have something to, to look at for that.
Ray, you had a comment on the street project?
You talking about the street that goes by my place?
No, this one.
Okay. I, I didn't hear what, I heard he says the two sixteen project.
Right.
Two thousand sixteen.
Yeah. So that's not Main Street?
Well, not down in your area.
I don't think any stretch of the coolie is included, but, you know.
Is the project that we just finished over here, your project is considered the two thousand fifteen, fourteen fifteen project, and this is the sixteen project that is just final, getting finalized.
And fifteen's already been finalized?
Done.
Yep.
Checked off.
So we're, we're just gonna sit there and hold water at my place for a twenty feet?
No, we, we, we do have a letter out to Quam for some warranty items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I did see that the drainage on Sixth and Main was on the agenda. I didn't ask for that, so I guess I'm looking for you guys to, if there was something more to address there this month.
Did you get a chance to look at that?
It wouldn't open up on my iPad, I don't know.
I have seen the video, and I, I did see it, that drainage, when I was in town one day. I guess at this point, we took a problem that was on Sixth Street and moved it down the hill, you know, so, you know, there, there's no curve there. So when it turns the corner, you know, there, there's no good channel for that water to go, so it spreads out. So instead of being, you know, a deeper, narrower channel next to the curb, it's a wider, shallower channel in Main. But we, and we can look at it again this spring, when it rains. See if there's an easier, you know, temporary solution before you do a, do a Main Street project.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because we don't wanna do a Main Street project for a while, so. Anything else?
Other than that, that's all I had.
Any questions for Jasper? Folios? Thank you, sir. Keith?
Oh, just a couple things, which really isn't even a portfolio, but, uh, we've been, the city's been talking to Butler over here, about just moving his machinery back a little bit. So we can actually park and also get out of our passenger doors, not sure how progress has went on that, but they're still there. So, yeah, because it's pretty tough, you've seen that when you park there. Uh, the other thing.
If I may say, unfortunately, I believe that there's no boulevard there, I mean, isn't the boulevard part of the street, or is it, or is it, I don't remember.
I'm not quite sure what happens there, because it's street, so then, the next.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the line is.
I know, we looked it up, and
You can ask.
There's really no.
Yeah, there would be a little bit there, now that I think about it, yeah, I think you're right.
I mean, we don't need to have a lot, just so we get our cars open.
Right, absolutely.
Also, we've been having trouble in the corner here, because we changed that corner, uh, so we could, so whoever's could pull out, and they wouldn't have a bump. Well, now they're using it as a parking spot, and coming out of the street.
The parking's too far down, yeah.
So, we tried to do something nice, and, um, talk about that.
I almost had an accident there today, because you can't see, and the guy didn't see me, and he come out on Main.
Yeah.
Because he, he also pulled past the boulevard, so he's actually sticking out into Main.
You're right, yeah.
But there, there is a no parking paint there now, but the problem, and now the city's aware of it, so, you know, they're going, they've been told, if you know, it's just gonna have to be a code to call a law enforcement, if it continues to be a problem, because it ends up being a blind, uh, corner there then.
It really is dangerous, because you end up pulling out, because you end up creeping out so far that.
And anyway, another situation where we try to do something, and you don't always think of all, I think. That's all we got.
Good, please?
Uh, with the airport authority, um, the apron expansion project was declared substantially complete on November tenth. And sometime soon, hopefully this week, we'll have a meeting to talk about the liquidated, liquidated damages, because they were late on the project. Uh, but the, it's complete, and as, as we now know, Ray is off that, that board, so I guess he won't be at the meeting when we talk about that.
I talked to Mark today about the project, and told him I was gonna resign, so he's aware of it.
Okay. And so that's it, and then that dates, of course, from the meeting tonight, to the board members on the library board. That board's gonna be active in two thousand seventeen, so that's it.
Okay. Ken?
Uh, nothing.
Hello?
Nothing.
I have nothing, uh, well, I do actually, one thing, um, I noticed, uh, I guess it's kind of a bill thing, but Tim Doctor did a oil change, it looked like I wanted to pick up, so we can do those ourselves, if you could pass that on. Thank you. That's all I have. Joan? Karen? Brad? Okay, move on to the bills. Do we have a chance to look at the bills? Motion to pay the bills?
I have a motion to pay the bills.
One second?
Second, yeah.
Keith?
Aye.
Please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, you need your turn. Thank you, everyone.